Okay. All right, are we ready to go? Okay. Welcome, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. It is Thursday, November the 19th, 5:30. We're in the boardroom at Legacy Campus, and this meeting is virtual as well as some in-person. We'll go ahead and start with roll call, and Larry will just start with you and go through our lineup.
Larry Gibson, board member.
Randall Bagley, board member.
Roger Potts for board member.
Kathy Chris-Jensen, board member.
Chris Corcoran, board member.
Jeff Nielsen, board member.
Terry Rhodes, board member.
Dale Hanson, business administrator.
Okay. We'd like to begin with our pledge and our mission statement, and Larry's going to lead us in it. And we who are here will just stand up and say it towards this flag. Oh, you're muted, Larry.
Dale, why don't you just go ahead?
He's in the middle of it.
Okay. You want to just lead us?
Yeah.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right.
Our mission is to educate students for success in a changing world.
Thank you. All righty. We do have a few recognitions to start off with tonight. We feel bad that our teachers who are being recognized are not able to attend with us. And hopefully, before this year is, the school year is over, we will be able to have them come in and get a recognition. From Birch Creek, we have Danielle Bingham. From Canyon, we have Joyce Lynn Murdoch. From South Cash, we have Rodney Butters. And from Cash High, we have Michaela Cutler. And we did talk about the boards doing some notes to those teachers. And for the time being, Randall is going to represent us and send a congratulation note to each of them. All right. We'd like to start with our public input. And just mention a couple of things before we get started. The Cache County Board of Education welcomes public comments from district patrons during regular board meetings. Feedback is an important part of being responsive to the public. Participants must sign up prior to the comment period using the clipboard at the back of the boardroom. Each speaker is provided three minutes to address the board. Board members will not directly respond to comments or answer questions during the comment period. If the speaker would like someone to follow up with a response, they are welcome to make that request. During public comment, speakers are asked not to address employment or personnel issues, complaints where other avenues for appeal are available, and items which have a separate public hearing. Patrons are always welcome to submit written feedback directly to the superintendent or to the board members. And so we do have a few people here for public comment. And we will go ahead and start with Merlin Humphries.
I think our taxes are way out of line. Our schools are not adequate to what really needs to be taught. They're taught, they're teaching things that are basically of no value. The kids don't learn anything. If you've ever gone into a store, they, they know nothing about making change. They basically have no life skills because they don't teach them anything of value. In schools, a good example is the new math system. They don't know how to tell time. They don't how, they don't know how to add and subtract. It's, and I think if that's what they're going to do, they need to close the schools down and forget it because the kids can learn more at home than they can at school because there's nothing at the schools except it's a time waster or a money waster. And we pay all this money to the school board, which is basically stupid because our education administrators are making all the money, and it ain't doing anybody any good except the administrators. The kids are not getting an education. And I think we need to get, we need to get an education. The kids need an education. Otherwise, it's going to be like, it says, we want you home so that we can support you. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Merlin. Would you like someone to respond to you?
Yes.
Okay. So we've got your phone number. We don't have your phone number.
It's the same as Cheryl's.
Oh, okay. All right. Next on the list, then, we have Marilyn Krager.
My concerns are very similar to Merlin's because I am concerned about the children not being able to learn how to talk and communicate one with another. They go to school, they don't, they don't talk. They sit and they use their fingers to control their electronic devices and do not learn how to carry on an intelligent conversation with anybody, whether it's in their family or they're in the school system. And they need to be learning that. And like Merlin said, they also are not being taught how to count, to add and subtract, which should be vital to anybody's existence. But they are not learning that because everything is instant with the computer. You slap it on and watch 10 times far and the answers are there. And they do not learn how to do the thought process of solving problems. And that is something that is of concern to me. And being able to communicate one with another is, is something that should be essential, but they're not learning that. And so I'm like Merlin. A lot of what's going on in the school system is a waste of time, and our money is being spent to waste time of the people involved, whether they're the teachers or whoever. And I know that once we stopped having predators at school, then we quit progressing as, as a people and started retrogressing. So those are my concerns.
Thank you. Mrs. Krager, would you like someone to respond to you?
Yes, I would.
And we have got your phone number, so we're good. All righty. Cheryl.
She says no.
Okay. All right, so we can just use the phone number that's down for her. Okay. All right. We appreciate very much you coming in and expressing your opinions. We do like to have public input. You are more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you would like. If you prefer, this is a good time to sneak out. So whatever you want to do. All righty. We will move on. Okay, we'll move to our consent agenda. And I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
I second.
Did you hear that?
Pardon me?
Okay. Have you got your microphones on?
Yes, I seconded. Can you hear me?
Yep. Who made the motion?
Terry.
Okay. All right, we will go ahead and vote. Terry made the motion. Jeff seconded it. Dale, does that come upon, for us to vote on board docs? Or it's not? Okay. We'll go ahead and do it vocally, then. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes? All those opposed? Okay, the motion has carried. All righty. We do have some action items on our agenda tonight. And our first one is, hang on here. I need to sort through. Yeah. Just looking for the other. Okay. Let me know if I missed one because I've got, not the one that you handed to me, but I've got one that I printed off at home. Thank you. Okay. I will take a motion to approve the Skyview High School's land trust plan redistribution.
This is Terry. I move that we approve the Skyview School Land Trust reappropriation.
Thank you.
I second it.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Any opposed? All right. Terry, did you second it? You made the motion. Who seconded it?
I did, Randall.
Thank you. Okay, we're having kind of a hard time hearing you at this end. Okay.
Turn your volume all the way down, Dale, on the computer. Turn it back, you can turn it up.
Okay. All right. I'll take a motion to approve the Nibley Elementary Trust Land Funds redistribution.
This is Chris. I move that we approve the Nibley Land Trust Funds redistribution.
This is Jeff. I second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. Chris made the motion and Jeff seconded it. Yep. Okay, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Say no. Okay, the motion has passed. All right, I will take a motion to approve the proposed definition of at-risk students for EARS application.
I move that we approve the proposed definition of the at-risk students for EARS application.
That was Larry.
Yes.
This is Randall. I second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. We'll go ahead and vote. All those who are in favor, say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Those who are opposed, say no. The motion has passed. Okay. Next, we have the request for the approval of the Cache County School District Strategic Direction Plan. And Tim, we have that down as a report a little bit later. Can we just go ahead and you tell us what is new or whatever you need to do and then before we vote on it?
Okay, I don't think there's anything substantive new that we didn't cover in our last meeting. We did do some cosmetic things to make the report look a little better at Kathy's request, and she did some editing for us. Are you muted, Kathy?
No.
Okay. Just a couple of things I want to say before you vote on that. I had the opportunity to be with a group last week, and one of the members of the group was Sean Covey. He's the son of Stephen Covey. And he covered a book with us called The Four Disciplines of Execution, which I thought were excellent. And it spoke to our strategic plan just a little bit. The first discipline of execution that he talked about was focusing on wildly important goals. And we have debated, as we've developed this strategic plan, about the literacy goal that we have. We are, we continue to lead the state in our early literacy program as well as many of the indicators on that strategic plan that we have this year. And, and then our second goal was to help students be competent and competent in mathematics by the time they graduate and move on to the post-secondary settings. And you all know how important that is. Our students are learning math earlier and earlier as they go into careers that are demanding a level of math that we didn't do when we were younger. So that's, that's an important goal. But to me, if you look at those two goals, a literacy goal and a math goal, as far as being wildly important for these kids to succeed in their lives and in their careers, those are two very important goals. And then he talks a little bit about acting on lead measures. And in the strategic plan, we have a set of measures that are really what are called lag measures. So they tell us what our final outcome is. And you can look at our numbers across the board on those and know that Cache is leading the state on those numbers. The lead measures are measures like the dibbles or accadients that we do in the early grades to gauge whether kids are succeeding and then adjust instruction to modify that. And you focus on those lead measures because if you can focus on those, you know that the lag measures that we see on our report are going to follow suit. So I just wanted to mention, I think there's a lot of work we still have left to do to work on those lead measures. Jeff and I talked a little bit about that when we were developing the plan. You know, that's what they do in business a lot. They, they have a bottom line, but they're trying to focus on those lead measures that will improve that bottom line. So I think that's important. Anyway, I think we're on the right track with this plan. I like the way it's laid out. I like that we're focusing, even though we have a lot of things going on in the district that we feel are important, we're focusing on just a few important measures as we work through that. So that's, I think, all I wanted to say as we kind of vote on this strategic plan at this time.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay. I had a couple of questions, Tim. Do, do we want to leave it called Strategic Direction? Okay, to Strategic Plan? Okay, okay. All right. Thanks so much for doing that. I think it's great. And I think Jenna did a really good job.
Kathy, you're muted.
Thank you. Okay. So what I just said was, I asked him if he was going to leave it as Strategic Direction or Strategic Plan, and it has been changed to Strategic Plan.
Yeah, I like Plan better. That's good.
Okay, everybody okay with that? All right, so we'll go ahead and I will take a motion to approve the Cache County School District Strategic Plan.
I move we approve this Cache County School District Strategic Plan.
This is Chris Corcoran. I second.
You're muted again, Kathy.
I'm so sorry.
It's off again. You're, you're still muted.
Okay.
You're still muted. Okay, there you go, Kathy.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we'll go ahead and take a vote. All those in favor of approving the Cache County School District Strategic Plan, say yes.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. The Strategic Plan has been approved. All right. Next on the agenda is the 2021 School Calendar Adjustment. Does anybody need to say anything about this?
Mike, I think probably wants to say something.
Okay, so Mike.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm just in another room.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
So if everybody can hear me, I'll give a quick explanation here. Board members, if you take a look at our current school calendar that I attached to the agenda, if you take a look at December, the Christmas break begins on Wednesday, the 23rd, and goes through January 1st. Well, what we're proposing is that on the 21st and 22nd, we put our entire district online learning. Teachers would still be on contract and be in their classrooms. And the reason why we're asking for that is if we had students go to online learning for those two days, it would give our entire school district a full 14 days, which is the quarantine period. And we could bring every student back to school when we begin on January 4th, and there wouldn't be any quarantine issues. And we'd have all of our schools back to normal and then just kind of start with a clean slate. And we'd, we can accomplish that if we are able to go our entire district online on the 21st and 22nd. Also gives our teachers a little bit of extra time to work with our students who have been in, who are in quarantine. It's just taking a lot more time than we expected to work with these students at that time as well as working with all of our students on those two days. So that's what we're asking for. Any questions?
Good idea.
Hey, this is Chris. Just one quick question, Mike. So what, what has your response from teachers been about this? Are they super supportive?
You know, we haven't put this out much yet because we wanted to make sure we had board approval. But when we've talked with the administration, they're very supportive of doing this. They, they just see it as a, a couple of days that teachers can really use. We also talked to our transportation people because that would be two days where transportation would not be taking place. And Wayne, Wayne can work that out with his folks. And we also talked to food service. And Kurt Jenkins says that's not going to be a problem for them. So as far as the school level, we see full support for this.
Thanks, Mike.
We're not, this is Mike again. We're not hearing anything if Kathy's bringing anything up.
Okay. All right, I will take a motion then to approve the 2021 School Calendar Adjustment.
Hey, this is Chris. I move that we approve the 2020-2021 Calendar Adjustment.
This is Larry. I second it.
Any questions? Discussion? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say yes. Yes?
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Say no. We'll move on down to the reports, Dan. And the first report is a request for Canyon Elementary Trust Land Funds redistribution.
What are you doing, that one, Gary?
Yes.
There you go. Thank you. Okay. Canyon Elementary School would like to adjust their school and trust plan. They had set aside some money for the Solution Tree PLC. And with COVID this fall and the, the October conference just was not what they thought it was going to be. It was virtual. They didn't think that was going to work well. So like many of our other schools, they want to take that money and reallocate that. Their proposal is that they take that money that would have gone to the Solution Tree Conference, and they put that towards technology, specifically updating some of the teacher computers that need to be updated within their building.
I have a question. This is Terry.
Yes.
As I read their request, I'm just wondering in the second paragraph of, it's the teachers that are aging or the computers that are aging?
Both. Trust me, this year, both. And I think the teachers may be aging faster than the computers. We feel like we're aging in dog years this, this time.
Okay, any other questions? All right. We'll go ahead and vote on this next time. The next item is moving schools to online learning. Update on that? And that's either Tim or Mike.
This is one. Yeah, that's mine. I just wanted to, you've probably received the emails as we've been monitoring the COVID cases, active cases at our schools. I feel like I sound like a broken record most of the time that our schools have been doing very well. They've been safe places for kids to be. Our school spread has stayed at a lower level than we're seeing in the community, which we felt pretty fortunate about. That changed this week just a little bit, and that's what I wanted to discuss tonight. We have Ridgeline High School that went over the 15 cases, active cases in their school that the state outlined as a threshold that we would begin some discussions of whether we would close a school. We've been monitoring that for, since Monday very closely. And there's a lot of factors that we look at when a school goes above 15. We look to see if the transmission is happening in school or in the community and coming to the school. We look at group dynamics, see if there's more than one member in a family that's, that's got COVID. We look at classrooms to see if our, if we have any classrooms where there is spreading inside the classroom. We may look at teams, either sports or activities such as theater, see if we have any spread in any of those groups. We also want to make sure we know if it's, if we think we've got it isolated, meaning the kids that have come in as active cases that we've sent home has slowed the spread well enough that our trend line starts to drop back down? Or are we getting more cases per day than are dropping off? We've held some meetings with the Health Department looking at all of those issues, looking at specific groups, looking at what they call an EPI curve, which is short for epidemiologist curve, which basically looks at when the cases were confirmed positive, when the person tested positive, and when they will come out of isolation. And again, if the trend line is such that we have more students going, getting active as cases and more transmission happening in the school, that greatly concerns us. We're in that role yesterday. We were at 18 cases at Ridgeline. Today, right now, we're at 24 with some other cases we think will come across as positive. But we're seeing a growth in that school that concerns us. We're seeing the spread happening not only outside in the community but in the classrooms. And for that reason, we're making the decision to close that school starting on, well, they'll come to school tomorrow, get the materials that they need to learn at home. And then on Monday, they'll start their, their two weeks of school closure, come back on December 4th. It's through December 4th, and they'll come back on that following Monday, which is the 7th of December. When we closed in March, we, we didn't know a lot about the virus and how it spread and, and who was at risk. So we ended up closing the entire district. We're not making that decision here. We're making a decision to, to close very strategically where we think we need to, to stop the transmission. So while we have other schools with active cases, none of those schools have reached the level. We've got a couple we're closely monitoring. Green Canyon has got a high number of cases in two of our middle schools, South Cash and Spring Creek, have a little higher number of cases, but nothing that's alarming us to have a closed discussion at this time. You look at some of our north schools like Skyview and North Cash, they were hovering, I think they got one case today. They were hovering right around zero active cases. So it really runs the gamut. We'll have one school start up, and if we can get on top of the isolation, we can calm that down and keep, keep moving forward. But when we see those numbers climbing to a level where we think the spread's going to get worse if we continue in school, that's why we're, we're doing a closure. I shouldn't even call it a closure because what'll happen is all of the students will go online on Monday. We'll continue their learning for two weeks, and then we'll have them back in the, in the school. on uh, Monday. We'll continue their learning for two weeks and then we'll have them back in the, in the school. Any questions or concerns?
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Active cases, Tim, are at twenty-five originally?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay.
Just before I came to this meeting, yeah.
Okay.
And that's with, um, you have to understand that's with seven cases that have dropped out of isolation. So we didn't just grow six overnight. We grew about thirteen overnight. So that's what's concerning us is the climb in that trend line is such that we feel like if we don't get on top of this, um, we'll, we'll put students and our staff at risk.
Yeah. Hey, Tim, uh, this is Chris. Uh, I just have a quick, maybe kind of related comment. I, I've heard from, over the last few days from a few teachers that are kind of concerned about you know, student behavior of late, you know, that I think is related to virus fatigue, you know, especially with the new trimester starting. You know, that, that there's a lot of uh, you know, kind of uh, either not wearing a mask or wearing a mask in, in ways that are not really helpful or useful. You know, a lot of uh, disregarding kind of of social distancing. You know, and, and given the way the trajectory's been going across the state, you know, I, I think, um, I think it's not surprising that um, that people who are a lot more um, uh, careful about this be kind of alarmed by that kind of thing. Do you guys have any sense right now for how um, you know, school administrators maybe are um, are trying to, to kind of reset right now as we're dealing with the, the current challenge and how, whether, whether there's any and, and this is a question for either you or Dr. Norton, but, but whether there's maybe an effort to to reinvigorate the commitment to making sure that these guidelines are met, you know, among students.
I, I'll let those two talk. Maybe Mike will want to talk in a minute too. Um, but let me just say we met with our middle school and um, high school principals and Gary met with his elementary, but I think we're seeing, uh, we're, we're getting good reports from the schools. It's not, we're not perfect and obviously students aren't perfect at wearing their masks um, all of the time. But I think there is a heightened concern right now, especially with the governor's mandate statewide. I think as students see sports uh, programs in jeopardy or um, even a, a school uh, on, going online like we're doing with Ridgeline, that's going to heighten those concerns. So I think we're seeing some uh, positive results out there and we're very hopeful that that will turn into less active cases as we move forward. But we definitely hit the same curve we were seeing in the community as of late. We saw our cases climb. Not as fast as what we were seeing in the community, but definitely, and I think that's attributable to the fact that in the school setting, our mask wearing is much better than what you're seeing out in the community. A couple of these cases I know at Ridgeline are due to a, a parent sponsored dance that took place that we asked uh, the organizers if they would suspend that, but they chose not to. So um, we do have some community events that are, that are adding to, to some of the issues. And Mike and Stoop and Gary may be able to speak further.
Yeah, I'll just jump in for a minute. The uh, Tim's explained it very well and we've had several meetings with the health department and we, we do a lot of discussions with them and of course they're tracking it on their level as well as ours. Probably one of the, another big uh, factors in our decision to look at Ridgeline is right now they have over three hundred and forty students quarantined because of the active number of cases. So that's an essence, uh, just under a fourth of their student body and that's creating such a challenge to the teachers there because the number of students who are out and they're trying to work with the kids in the class as well as the students who are in quarantine. And there has to come a time when we just have to do a clean reset to where we can um, get everybody back together and uh, start this again. Now, talking to Principal Foster, their preferences are for sure to stay in school, but there comes a point when we have to do a reset to be able to stop the quarantining and, and the high number there as well as getting everybody back in. Because the teachers would rather have the students in the classroom.
Gary?
Chris, I would just say if you have uh, specific, you know, schools, I would be happy to reach out to the administrators over those schools. Um, I did speak with a parent today who had that same concern that maybe some of the students are starting to get just a little bit lax and so I contacted that principal directly. I also spoke with another principal today who, she said, I just, I just feel like it's time to revisit it, just to remind our students, just to be vigilant on wearing our mask. And it's not that they're being defiant or belligerent or anything like that. I think they're just getting tired and they're maybe starting to let them drip, blow their nose, you know, and it's just those reminders, hey, we just need to make sure we're wearing correctly, that our nose and our chin are both covered, uh, that kind of thing. But we're happy to readdress that. And like I said, if you have specific schools, I'd be happy to reach out to them directly rather than just flock shoot that.
Thanks, really appreciate that. I'll, I'll, I'll communicate with you kind of separately so I can share that with you.
Let me just, let me just add a, a thought or two. We are, we are definitely concerned with principals who have not, who have the role of the contact person. And Brittany's one of those. She did not want to give up the the opportunity to talk to parents about kids. And um, I think we all know that she has done from the very beginning a really, really marvelous job of trying to make sure kids are following the rules. But she hasn't been able to be out of her office for days. And she's spending all her nights and she's spending all of her weekends talking to parents whose kids are quarantined. So yeah, there is some fatigue on some of our principals' levels because they haven't felt like they can share that responsibility with people that we have in the schools who are capable of making those contacts. So that's an area that I know we need to work on with some of our principals. Because they're just going to have to, when, when the level gets to a certain point, they are going to have to share that responsibility and they're not going to be able to talk to every parent, even though they want to. Because the students need to see the principals and the vice principals out in the halls. And just, just a reminder that, that we're, we're still in this and we've got to get to a point where maybe the Christmas break will give us a little bit of relief from the fatigue that we're all feeling. But we'll get there and I think this will be a gentle reminder to all kids and parents that we have to be very diligent or our kids are going to be at home. They're not going to be at school and we all know that the safest place in this valley right now for kids is at school and we can document that. And, and we just really want the opportunity of having in-school instruction. So yeah, we're, there's, there's a little fatigue out there. We're trying to do everything we can to build teachers up, to build our education, support people up and keep our principals uh, with that charge that we know we're going to make it. The vaccine news is good. Teachers should be among the first groups to get that and that will ease that burden of wondering whether the kid sitting there talking to him is going to be the person who gives them COVID. So there's a lot of things looking up right now and, and, but we, we are trying on a daily basis to do things for our staff and our teachers that will let them know we know how difficult this is. We want to honor our teachers by abiding by the rules. I, I think Carolyn sent you a letter that I received from one teacher who was kind of challenging that as soon as we got to fifteen, we should have pulled the trigger. My job is to educate her that it's not just the fifteen number, it's whether we're on an incline or a decline. And um, and I think the time has come that we had to, we had to pull the trigger at, at Ridgeline. But we will, we will keep you in the loop and we will let you know anytime we're getting close to something like this. But parents just need to understand, we're not, we're not closing any schools. We're just moving to online instruction and it's for a period of fourteen days. That gives us a chance to take all the kids, the three hundred and forty. They will no longer be able, be at home waiting for the same instruction that the teacher has just given in the classroom. And we can handle a small number of those kids, but we can't handle a fourth of a school. So we just appreciate immensely what all of our staff is going through right now. I think I'll send you another copy of a letter tomorrow that I got just from a teacher who was just describing how thankful she was that we gave them one day between trimesters to just be able to take a deep breath and get the grades done and get ready for the next trimester. And she was a, a teacher that was in school when we started. But she's recognized that we've pulled it off and we've kept kids in school and the best instruction we can give is in-school instruction. And so um, it's just a great letter just to, to show the appreciation for just one day that we worked into the schedule to give everybody a chance to just take a breath. I happen to have a daughter who teaches, so she had a day and not to get ready for the next trimester, but to get ready for parent-teacher conferences. And I can tell you, I got more letters from teachers in the elementary setting thanking the board and us for the opportunity of having just that day to get ready for parent-teacher conferences. So I know our teachers are stressed, everybody's stressed. But we'll get through this and we just appreciate the support we've received from our board members. And just want you to know that we're working in conjunction with, we'll never make a decision without working with the administration at the school involved. And we've spent a lot of time with Brittany. She's an outstanding leader. I held her up as the model of how to to open a school during the COVID and how to, to implement all the guidelines to our other principals and it's just amazing that the luck of the draw, that her school ends up being the first one to go into quarantine and online learning. But it's not because they haven't tried and it's not because they have given up. It's, we just need a little more support from the community in the whole, as a whole because we're bringing a lot of the community into our schools. And we need people just to pay attention to the things that they're being told that will help it make it possible for us to keep kids in school. And that's not having dances, that's not having parties, it's not having gatherings. But it's just abiding by the, by the rules so that we can keep kids in school. And the best thing we have going for us is I think the kids that are heavily involved in extracurricular activities and that's not just sports. That's music and choir and band and drama and debate and all those things. Realize that they are not going to be able to do that if we don't keep kids in school. So we're trying everything we can and we just want you to know how much we appreciate your support as a board.
Hey, thank you. Anyone have any other questions concerning this issue?
Kathy? I've got a gentleman sitting back here by me that came just a little bit late and missed the public input, but he would like an opportunity to address the board real quickly.
Okay.
If that's okay and we can get his name and on the board here in a minute.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Go ahead and have him come up.
I'm just going to have him here with me.
Okay, perfect.
Yep. Hi, I uh, come when I heard that they might be shutting down some of the schools and I, I appreciate all that you guys have done. I, I think the administrators have done an amazing job. I think the teachers have done an amazing job. The reason I come in is because some of these extracurricular activities in my life has made a huge difference in my life and maybe more than my education, but I think that they're both so important. So it gets me worried when some of these uh, students have been in these extracurricular activities since they was four years old and and all of a sudden they're coming and they might be seniors, they might miss their senior year and it might make the difference in their life. I mean, a huge difference. I, I think so highly of the Cash County School District and what they've done. Actually made a list of the top ten individuals that has done for good in this in Cash County and one of them is actually the superintendent. I think he's either between one and three on, on what they've done for this community. I really appreciate it. But I just, I hope that there's ways, I know there's a five-day weekend coming up over Thanksgiving. You'll have Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday and Sunday. And I hope that during that time we can have some of these drop off toward, because they're making, have to make decisions that are huge that I couldn't make. I mean, it's a difference. I mean, I got people that I don't want to die and, but yet I know all the people that I've talked to and say, I'd rather be dead than have not been able to interact with my family around Christmas or the Thanksgiving. So you guys have to make decisions on, thank you so much. You're making a decision that I couldn't do. I mean, it's, it's like, do we let this happen or do we let this happen? Both of which are bad. Uh, and I appreciate your time, but, but, but if there's any way to try to let those extracurricular activities happen, I would, I would appreciate it. I'd be forever indebted to you. I'd owe you favors. Uh, because I know it's made a difference in mine and I know it's made, and it's making difference in thousands of kids' lives. I watched how the, the viruses that were shooting up all across the country. We had like six weeks ago forty and then we had forty-one active cases and then it went to down to thirty-one and then it went to twenty-six or twenty-eight. And then it went back up to thirty-seven and now all of a sudden we're at seventy-seven. I thought, man, we're doing really good. It, when the whole country's going up and we're actually dropping. I thought it can't hold that way forever and I know it can't. So I think whether they're school or not, I think those cases because the whole community is going up, it's got to go up here too. Uh, but, and so I hope it doesn't hurt those cases or those extracurricular activities that we're doing uh, or the, the, the kids are doing. I think sometimes their coaches or their teachers that are in band or orchestra or those types of things need to say, look, wear the mask. We've got the best band in the whole state. We need to make sure you wear your mask because you don't want to haul this into fifth grade. We don't want you to put all that talent and all that practice in, or in sporting events, which is what I like more. My kids are all in both sporting event and, and band and and orchestra. Uh, but I, but the teacher need to be very diligent. Say, look, I mean, Mount Crest has one of the best wrestling programs in the entire country this year. If I was their coach, I'd be saying, you wear that mask every single time. Put the hands, wash your hands, try to stay away from other people because you've been wrestling since you're fourth grade or four years old, you need to be out there making sure you don't get it so that you can go there and win the state title. Cause they will win the state title. That's how good their Ridge Life has one of the better wrestling programs in the state also. I would have been telling Ridge Line and Skyview, I've watched those two teams play football. Amazing. If I was their coach, I'd have been saying, you wear those masks, you stay away from these events that might give you the coronavirus. But that's something hard to do because the kids don't think that they're vulnerable and they probably aren't.
Thank you, sir. We have a three-minute li, limit. Would you like to wrap it up?
Thank you so much. Thank you. I'm so sorry.
Thank you. Um, did you get your name on the list? And then if you would like some feedback from uh, someone in the district office, if you just put your number down there, then someone will get back with you. And thank you so much for coming. Okay, we'll go ahead and um, move forward and uh, have our monthly financial report by Dale.
Okay, um, just quickly, this will be a financial report for the end of October. And uh, so some of the key things we'll note in here is that we have gone through um, and tried to shore up the the expenditure budgets. Now that we have the actual carryover figures from the prior year. And one of the things that we, we don't know the exact numbers on yet, that would be the current year's revenue figures for the state. We, we did get from our October 1 count that we did have an increase in enrollment from last October to this, grades one through 12 of 0.6%. So that should drive additional funding for the district. And, but we have been able to, to shore up things very well, I think, in the general fund itself. And there's a couple of things that are anomalies, I think, in this year's monthly reports. And that'll be looking here, one, one would be, for example, our interest earnings on the revenue side. Interest rates back in June were just right under 1% at the state treasurer's pool. And right now they're at just barely over five or 0.5%. So that's, that's almost in half our, our interest earnings based on the rate itself. The, the one thing on the expenditure side, again, in the general fund where we have about 86% of our budget tied into salaries and benefits. You can see that we, we are fine, for example, here in instructional side where we have all of our teachers' salaries. We're right on track with what percentage of the total expenditures last year had been experienced by the end of October as compared to this year, both at 17.7% of the budget. So we're right on track there. Down here with benefits, last year we were at 14.8%. This year we're at 19.6%. And the same thing applies down to the other categories. When you look at benefits here, we're at 15.6% and a year ago now we're at 18%. Last year, down here we're at 14.2% instructional media. And this year we're at 19.1% or 19%. The reason for that is that we have been able to make a change in payroll where our health insurance premiums in the past were being charged out over a 10-month, over a nine-month period, starting with the end of October payroll. And so a year ago, there really only had been one month of premiums that had been charged against the programs for the health insurance coverage. This year we've been able to change things so that we were able to start taking our insurance deductions beginning the end of September. So here we, in all of these presentations, we have an extra month of insurance coverage comparison to a year ago. So that's gonna, it's gonna drive up the, the percentage of the benefits budgets that are being realized this year as compared to last year. One thing to look at with the lease programs we've entered into with Johnson Controls, we've taken what was anticipated, anticipated to be the savings generated by these projects and taken those funds and put them into a budget to repay the lease agreement for those services. But having taken that out of the utility budgets, right here you can see that last year this time we're at 24.2% of our utilities expended by the end of October. And this year's current budget is solely 21.3%. So that's looking positive. And again, it's still already the year, winter months are probably the highest on our utility usage, but comparison to last year, we're, we're ahead of where we were then. Really with the other budgets themselves, I think they're all holding strong right now. I don't have anything particular looking to point out at this time, but I don't know if there's any questions that anyone has, but right now the budget is strong, we're doing well.
Excuse me?
Just so you know, we, we still have about $2.3 million of unappropriated funds still available to help in any other categories. I know there's, we did pay out a, like a 1% salary augmentation to employees on the 10th of November and that came out of that carryover figure. And then we are anticipating a small Christmas bonus that will go out on the first, second week in December. Can't remember the date of that exactly, the 9th of November. And that would be capped at $200 for full-time employees. And then be tiered down to either 200, 100 or $50. So all in all, I think we're still in, in a great financial position and that's really all I think I want to present tonight. If there's any questions, anyone have?
Any questions? Okay, thank you Dale, appreciate it. We'll go ahead and move on then to, we'll skip number four since we've already taken care of that and come down to our board committee reports. Terry is going to do a report on the last internal audit meeting.
We had our first meeting with our newly hired internal auditor on staff on the 4th of November, Alan Allred. We offered a position to with a finite number of hours to expand on internal auditing this, for this school year, thanks to Scott Rigby for arranging all that and hiring Alan. When we met in, on the 4th of November, we, as an audit committee, made several decisions for what we feel that he should spend his time with this year. First, he's going to do some training specific to the fiscal handbook procedures that need to be done for schools, seven new schools that have new, or seven schools that have new principals or new financial secretaries. So he's going to focus on those. Mountainside, Nibley, North Park, Greenville, Heritage, Spring Creek and North Cache. He will make sure to visit those and visit others as he has time to, for that training. He also, this year, is going to create a schedule to revisit high school activities accounts, to do some auditing of those, where they are as far as fund balances and how those are running. It's been about five years since he did that last time. So he's going to revisit those. He's also going to look at, as he visits the high schools for that, he's going to look at student fee waivers and fees and specifically to make sure that they appear to be in line with what expect, what we would expect them to be. And that, that no programs in extracurricular programs in schools that are charging fees are exorbitant or if they aren't using, needing the thresholds that we set for the school fees in those programs, that we might lower those. Anyway, he'll, he'll look at those and he also will work on creating a district fraud hotline, which would be email, not phone. But for our compliance with the, what the state auditor is, is expecting us to do as a school board. And we know that he won't be able to accomplish all of those projects this year with the hours that we've allotted to him, but he's going to set up a schedule to make sure those projects do get done within the next couple of years. And so he's, by our next meeting in February, he's going to have a schedule for us of how he feels like he should allocate his time to accomplish those things for us. So that's the report of where we are with internal auditing. Does anyone have any questions?
Great. Okay, thank you Terry. I, I've been really impressed with how the internal audit committee has turned out over the past few years, the things that are being improved in the financial areas in the individual schools. And Terry's really done a great job, Chairman, Chair Manning, is that how you would say that? Being the chairman of this committee. So thanks. And just a note to everyone, after you have attended some of your committee meetings, if you will let me or Carolyn know, we can put you on this agenda each month. So you can report back to the rest of the board what you have learned from the committees that you have been on. So please feel free to let me or her know if you want to do a presentation. Okay, so for the president's minute, just a couple of quick things. I just want to let you know that I have mailed out the legislative priorities to all of the legislators and even the couple of new ones and just sent, those who are running in the election, just a congratulation note from our school board along with that legislative priority. Roger, do you feel like you would be up for doing the school board appreciation letter for December?
Sure, I'll take care of it.
Okay, so if you can just get it to Jenda, she's the one who sends it out to everybody. Okay, thank you. And we are really happy to see Roger here. I don't know if any of you know, but he has been recuperating from the coronavirus the last couple of weeks. So I'm really glad to see you Roger and to know you're feeling better.
Thank you.
I had just a couple of items on our handbook. I tried to look through it and see if, to change. And I do have a couple of suggestions. I don't know if we have to vote on it or if we could just say, yeah, let's do it. You can let me know whether we should vote on it or not. But where we have changed our vision statement in the strategic plan, I think we should take our old one, that's like three paragraphs out and put the, the new one in. That we should remove our goals. That's kind of a nightmare because every year we have changed our goals and so then we have to reprint brand-new handbooks just for that. And we can now just refer to the strategic plan, what our goals are. And let me see, one other thing. Oh. I, I think we need to, in the category on page 12, and you might want to look at this in your handbook when you get a second, we need to add some additional information. It's talking about advertising our meetings. Let me look really quick here so I get it exactly right. And we just need to add. Oh, in the meeting minutes, we just need to add in the second paragraph down that, that it needs to have not just the time of the meeting, but it needs to have the date and the place. So I'll just get Carolyn to add that in. And then the last thing that I had a question on, we have some guidelines in the handbook on what our responsibilities are for the school land trust plans. And now we have the TSSA plans. I'm wondering if we need to just do a little section on what our responsibilities would be for that. What's your feedback and thought on that, on putting an additional little blurb in there about the TSSA recommendations?
Yeah, this is Chris, I think that would be a great idea.
Okay. Is Mike in here? Mike, are we probably gonna have the TSA, TSSA funds from now on or is that just kind of up in the air? It's a permanent thing?
Yeah, those are permanent funds at this point.
Okay, alright. So I'll write up something and have Mike look at it and then I'll get it to you at another meeting so you can see if, if that's okay to add. Are you okay with the other changes in the handbook? Anybody have a concern?
No, they all make sense to keep it current. So, and I don't believe we have to vote on those since it's just a handbook, it's not code or policy.
Thank you Terry, appreciate that. Okay, then we'll go ahead and have the superintendent's report.
And I covered everything I probably wanted to except for this. Thank you for living your public lives and your private lives in such a manner that we don't have any of you in headlines of local papers or being covered by local television and radio stations. That's much appreciated as an individual and as a board. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, does anyone have anything else that we need to bring up before we adjourn? Okay, this is not my favorite way to have our meeting. I really like it better when we're all together. For one thing, I don't have to deal with quite as much technology, which simplifies a, a lot for me. But, so thanks for being patient with me and with the technology. I hope all of you have a really great Thanksgiving and just want you to stay healthy and, and well. And our next meeting will be the first Thursday in December. So if no one has anything else, then this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you Kathy.
Bye everybody.
We'll see ya.
Good to see you all.
You made it Kathy.
Oh my gosh.
Nice job.